Alright, everybody, I want to welcome everybody to the June 20th, 2018 regular meeting for the Atherton Town Council. Can I get the vote up?
Councilmember Lewis?
Here.
Councilmember Lampres?
Councilmember Lampres.
Councilmember Negolia?
Here.
Vice Mayor Winmer?
Here.
Mayor Ruiz?
Here. I apologize if we're going to also stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Why should we be just speaking in the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as its own?
At this time, I'm going to ask if there's any member of the public that would like to make a public comment on any item that is not on the agenda. Seeing none of them are going to go ahead and close about comments, and move over to the closed session, see?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the city council members minus council member, uh...
Lampres.
Lampres. Back in closed session to discuss the performance evaluation of the city manager. There was a discussion and no action was taken.
Thank you very much, and we go ahead and move on to the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you have the written report before you this evening. I've answered a couple of one-on-one questions, but they remain insignificant with respect to the report. The staff here can answer any other questions. Call council mayor.
Any members of council, any questions for staff on the city manager part of the project?
I'll just make a comment.
Please.
I'm happy that you've extended the grid for us, so the little bubbles are easier to read. Thank you.
For us older people.
I'm just speaking for myself.
I was just, it works better if you...
That was what he said.
Any other comments for the city manager? Seeing then, let's go ahead and move on to the consent calendar, items number eight through fourteen. Does any member of the council want to pull an item eight through fourteen? Seeing then, any members of the public, do you like to pull any item on the consent calendar, eight through fourteen? Seeing none, we're going to go ahead and close that. Can I get a motion to approve items eight through fourteen on the consent calendar? All in favor? Any opposed? There's none left. Thank you, Theresa. So, let's go ahead and move on to item number fifteen, which is on the record agenda.
Good evening, Mayor, members of city council. My name is Marty Heneman, and I'm project manager for the Civic Center project. And I think we all wish we were here today to award the contract to one of the general contractors submitted. Unfortunately, that is not what's happening tonight. And, but I believe, uh, staff, in your staff report, has some options to move the project forward for your consideration. And I'm just going to go over those at a high level, and I'm going to dig deeper into a little bit more detail on that. So, the recommendation is to receive the bids submitted from the two pre-qualified general contractors, Ovara Construction and Hensel Phelps Construction on June 5th, and then take action on next steps on the Civic Center project. Option one would be to award the bid to lowest responsive bidder, Ovara Construction, at $56,381,000. The staff does not recommend this option, and I'll get into more of that in a bit. Other options that are possible for consideration for council is, number two, is to reject the bids and rebid the project as is to the open market. Option three, and there's two parts to it, A and B. Three A would be to reject the bids, redesign to include more value engineering options, and either A, repackage current project into an optional phases award option and rebid to the open market, or three B, reduce project scope and rebid to open market. Uh, option four would be to reject the bids and repackage as a design-build option. So, before we go into a little bit more detail on each one of those options, I just want to highlight that per the latest MAC5 estimated, uh, estimate for the project date of March 26, 2018, the total construction cost for new city hall PD building, library, and site renovations was $40.5 million. The lowest responsive bid is based on a total lump sum for the three bid items that cannot be accepted individually or changed after bid opening. Ovara's base bid for these three items was $56,381,000, approximately 40 percent higher than the MAC5 estimate. Hensel Phelps Construction, the other one that bid, base for these three items was $68,620,000, approximately 70 percent higher than the MAC5 estimate. Upon review of the proposals submitted by Ovara and Hensel Phelps, both were being responsive, with Ovara being the lowest responsive base bid. However, even with the four deduct alternatives for hydro seat for admin city hall and the library, and the site where some of the teak for the library, not the city council chambers, the total deducts would be $1.885 million for the overall base bid for Ovara at $54,496,000. So now, I'd just like to get into a little bit more about the options that are presented to you tonight for consideration. Uh, option one, this option would require the town to award the contract to lowest responsive bidder, which would be Ovara, at $56.3 million, and immediately direct staff to work with the contractor and architect to reduce the scope and budget to an identified number that the council has set. However, until that number and agreement is reached, a notice to proceed is not issued. Uh, staff and the architect and team contract would revise the scope of project per budget and direction to subsequent change order. Uh, the council agrees to an end issue of notice to proceed. If staff and the contractor cannot reach an agreement on the scope of changes, the town will terminate the contract before it proceeds. This option exposes the town to legal risks from the potential challenge from the next responsive bidder, and a challenge from Ovara in some way for a share of value engineering savings, and this option is not recommended by staff. Option two is this option involves rejection of all bids and rebid of the project as is, but a rebid to the open market instead of pre-qualified list that we did so just recently. At a different time in the bid climate, this option may yield lower results, but at this time, in this period, the market's very robust and not showing any signs of flowing down. This option may yield, may actually yield higher bids and lower bids. And so, the main reason, this is the main reason that we only had two of the five pre-qualified bidders submit, because there's so much activity going on in the market. Again, this option is not recommended by staff. Option three, again, which has two parts to it, this option involves rejection of all bids and redesign the project to incorporate more value engineering options for the bid. Option three A, which is a little bit different than three B, three A would repackage a bid into distinct building packages so that it could be bid independently, and the town could award only one building and rebid the other at a desired later date. Additional value engineering would be provided, but the project would not be reduced in the scope as a base bid at this time. The project would be bid such that the town could award the library or the admin PD portion of the project, or the town could award the library and the admin PD together. Possibly a combined award must be identified in the bid, and the low bid will be combined project regardless of whether the library and admin PD is lower than when included together. The building and site work would have to be designed to function independently, which would cost a lot of redesign work there. This option is not recommended since the awards, that since the bids would be expected to be high or higher than recently received. Option three B, this option is similar to three A, except that staff, the design team, and the project management committee, subcommittee of the CCC, take some time to evaluate the bids and suggest the value engineering items provided by the bidders, evaluate the revised bids to incorporate some of the items as part of the base bid, and reduce the overall scope of the project for both the library and admin PD to meet the budget target established by city council. Staff anticipates this option could be completed by December of 2018 through an expedited review and redesign process to get the project back out to bid by the end of this calendar year. A scope of work from WRS would need to be approved to initiate this option, and Eileen Olo from WRS is here to answer any questions regarding potential project redesign costs and schedule, uh, questions come up from council. This option three B is being recommended by staff and the project management committee. Option four involves a full redesign of the project using the design-build delivery method. This option would require the town to conduct a request for qualifications for qualified general contractors that are teamed with a design architect. Once a list of pre-qualified GC architect teams have been approved by city councils, staff would release a request for proposals to have them submit bids on providing the redesigns necessary to meet the city council's target budget. A design-build delivery method would not involve WRS, as they would be legally precluded from participating. This process could also take more than nine to 12 months or more, and it could take significantly more funds to initiate. In the design bid model, build model, the city council would establish a budget target, and the town could lose a large amount of design control on its final buildings. This option is not being recommended by the city council or by staff. Um, staff held meetings with the PMC on June 6th and again on June 14th to review the bids and develop options for city council's consideration. And after both those meetings, at the final meeting on the 14th, both the project management committee and staff are recommending city council select option three B to move forward with. Uh, that concludes my presentation, Mayor. Now, I would like to, Paul Beamer from MAC5 is here to provide some information on why the discrepancy in the MAC5 estimate to the bids received, so...
Paul, come on.
Evening. Sorry I'm here under these circumstances. First off, we'd like to acknowledge that there's something wrong here, and we made a mistake. And somehow, the big climate that we encountered for Atherton wasn't even close to the estimating that MAC5 performed. It's unprecedented, and Elizabeth, or Theresa, can we put the slide up?
Do they have any handouts?
Yes.
One sheet, but two sides. So, MAC5 is constantly monitoring the bid climate in the Bay Area, and with civic projects like this in mind, when we see a bid bust or we see the bidding climate changing, we try to factor that into the estimates that our team puts together. The examples that you have are of similar projects that in the last year were Leeds Platinum or Net Zero Project, a, an essential services facility, and we've broken them out into similar libraries or civic centers. So, some of the examples here, you can see the pricing for the Atherton Library, and then the Brisbane Library, which also bid, and the city manager is referred to its cost. And then, the Cherry Island Community Center is over in the East Bay, and went through a similar situation last year. And then, on the civic center, the San Rafael Public Safety Facility is very similar in that it's an essential service facility, larger than ours, and underground garage with significantly high-end finishes on it. And it illustrates that you can get a lot of the things that we were designing here for a reasonable budget. Unfortunately, what we're seeing here was a convergence of a number of non-competitive, uh, non, not enough competition, that our strategy here was to come up with a shortlist that would allow us to minimize the number of contractors coming in, but in this market, that was probably not the right thing to do. We, over the course of the bidding, we tried to make sure that all of those bidders stayed engaged, and at certain points, overall told us that they were probably going to back out, because Lathrop was there, and they knew they'd be undercut by that contractor. Other contractors came in and said, from the time that we were pre-qualified to this, for this project, we assumed it would be going out to bid in the beginning of 2018. It didn't come out until later on in April. They got other things to do. There was lots of work on the streets when this happened. And unfortunately for us, we've been estimating in this market for 17 years, and we've never seen this kind of a, an anomaly in the, in the bidding, so... And we don't want to put the town in that position, so we take it seriously, and we'd like to figure out a way to work through the next phase to make sure that that anomaly doesn't happen again. And to that end, there's a couple of things that we'd like to do. We think that this is still a budget-driven project, and with your assistance, we'd like to make sure that we get onto whatever that budget is. Knowing that the market has changed things, we need to reassess, you know, what we put into the project. So, we'd be happy to help you do that. So, in that effort, what we'll try to do if we go into this VE phase that's being recommended, is that we'll dig deeper into the subcontractors who were part of both the overall and Hensel Phelps bid pool, and find out what they saw in the documents, and how do we address modifying that to improve our, our budget. We'll also reach out as the new options are presented to make sure that the subs are available and interested and can provide whole projects. For instance, we had some examples of some of the finishes and materials that went into this project that we just weren't getting any coverage on. There would be one bidder, and he knew he was the only one, so... So, maybe we could go to the other slide now?
Hello? Hey, hi, Mike Lampres, councilmember, is joining us from London, um, in a very interesting London hotel. Oh, that's your ceiling! That's why I thought it was so interesting. I was going to say, they just got the thing on permanent. Thanks, Mike. You're here? And Paul Beamer is at the podium. Alright, continue.
Okay. So, in, since bid day, we've scratched our heads and talked with these bidders to find out what happened here. And top of the list is lack of competition and an opportunistic pricing market. What we found was that, for instance, overall is a very low bid-driven public bid type of contractor, but Hensel Phelps on the other side has more experience with negotiated contracts. When the two looked at each other, overall knew that there was plenty of float for their overhead and profit to work up. When they didn't have Lathrop in, you know, in the same category with them, their overhead and profit went up by double, and we're considering that somewhere in the $2 to $3 million range, just because they could. And it's, it's hard for us to factor that into an estimate, and that's kind of the tea leaves that you see on opening day. And I think that if this goes back out to a open, public bid, that'll be more successful. And that also happened in the subcontractor field, though they got coverage on most of the trades, they asked for a bid extension at the end of it, and that's because they weren't coming up with enough coverage. They were scrambling to find subs to bid these things. And when they saw the market and saw that they were looking for more bidders, their prices went up accordingly, so... The second item that, that sort of came to our attention was the unique and unfamiliar project elements, that because these guys are all busy, and they're all, bidding is the last thing they get around to doing, a lot of them look for a simple, clean set of bid documents that says, "I want to put up a standard office building, and I know what mechanical system I'm going to put on the top of that roof." There were a number of unique features, particularly in the library, like the teak windows, that nobody got any coverage. In our estimating, it took us three to four months to get one supplier to give us the time of day to tell us how much this material would cost. When we talked to the general contractors about this on bid day, they said that they said, "We'll give you the material, you've got to figure out how to build it." So, they're not even installing the, the products. Other items that, that came up were rammed earth, where we, we had only one bidder who knew how to put that together, and the rest of them sort of viewed it as an exotic. The microgrid, unfortunately, one of our goals up front here was to make this as green as possible, and in this bidding environment, that meant that, that risk or that uncertainty about what those parts and pieces were influenced the bids. And with the Tesla batteries that we were considering for our microgrid, those prices went up dramatically too, from the suppliers. Even though we talked and gotten quotes from Tesla ourselves in our estimates, bid day, the numbers were significantly different. Next would be the, the project location, and the, the challenge with Atherton is that there's not a lot of business routes to get here. A lot of the trades that would be driving in from far away saw that we had listed our construction hours between eight and five, and a lot of these trades like to get started at 6:00 AM so that they can, if they're coming from the valley, they can beat the traffic. So, it's very difficult to get coverage on, on local bidders because of some of those restrictions. And I, and I think it's subjective, but I got a feeling that people said, "Well, it's Atherton, maybe they just want to have their civic center and they'll suck it up." You don't have to accept that, and we, we should change that if that's the case, but in the bidding climate that we were in, that could have been a, you know, unquantifiable factor in all of this. And then, the phasing is next. The, the issue with phasing, we didn't consider properly. In our estimating, we can go through and count all of the parts and pieces to the puzzle, but the phasing is somewhat less academic. It's hard to put a number on the complexity of the phasing here, and though we devoted the time for all of those phasing, phases to happen, we didn't account for the bidders looking at the risk of having an operating civic center and library and the public milling around through the middle of a construction site. And they, they took that as a significant risk and bid accordingly to cover the complexity of that. I think that if we move forward, it might be worthwhile to consider ways to simplify that phasing so that they have more access to the site. In talking with overall, they said that if they could simplify the phasing, we could save $2 million. And then, the unique features that I was just referring to, when we added up all of the various parts and pieces to that, from the sort of cost-cutting suggestions we got, there's potentially $2.5 million worth of savings there. And then, last is sort of market uncertainty. Last year, we started getting tariffs on lumber, then we started getting tariffs on photovoltaic panels, and now, the potential for trade wars over aluminum and steel worries the, the trades. And so, not being able to bid in a certain market may have had an influence in the bottom line here, so... That's where we see how we got to this point. Do you have any questions about the presentation?
Any members of council, any questions for Paul? Please.
You talk about phasing, that, oh, we said that maybe $2 million would be saved on the cost if the site was completely clean and there was no other operating, like we would have to move the police out, the admin, the library. There's got to be a cost associated with that, maybe to move the police out. I mean, all, all along, we've thought that we could keep the police in, in its space right now, build their new facilities, and maybe once, then that's the least expensive option, because if we have to relocate them someplace else and put all of the systems in, it's got to cost at least...
Oh, that would cost money, for sure. You can't say that it's $2 million net. There, there's going to be a cost to relocate them, and most of our decision-making has been about being as efficient and effective with the police department and the other city staff, or staff and facilities. But there may be a cost benefit and an inconvenience moving them out of the way at, at the first time, having to relocate all of their communications and so forth more than once, but that could be offset by how much the site costs. Well, so far, we've gotten the temporary facilities for the library out there, so we have a sense of what those cost, how quickly they can be installed. Maybe part of the phasing is that the library moves in there first, and then we, we phase it so that the library gets built, and then when they vacate the, the temporary building, the town moves into the same facility, and that might streamline that process.
So, just on that point, there's really three different components to the phasing. There's the library, there's the admin, and there's the police. Do you have a sense from talking to them about how they considered the cost elements with all three of those? The one you just addressed, I think, was the admin, right? The, the admin, the plan was to create a temporary facility basically at the end of Ashfield for the admin, so they'd kind of be in the middle of the construction project. If we didn't do that, and either used the temporary library facilities for the admin and built the project in two components, that's one way to deal with it, and the other would be to move the admin to the park. But that deals with just the admin. What was part of their cost concern about the library building, the temporary building? Do you know where it is?
No, I don't think it was that, and we didn't get that much detail out of which components had the, the biggest risk. It was just overall, they saw a hassle factor because the public was going to be in the middle of their construction site.
Question, uh, you mentioned during your comments that the bidders knew who were here. Is there, is, they knew, they know their competition, they know who's here? Is that...
Yeah.
It's all public information.
Is there any way we could wait?
No. Not done with words.
And, and all the subcontractors start talking to one another, and when they're giving a price to one contractor and then the other, then they're starting to realize how little competition there is.
They, they both know, a couple of months before, that they were the only two in the game, and so...
So, there's obviously no way, way of purchasing all of them?
No, because one of them didn't come to the mandatory pre-bid, so they got down to three, and then Swinburne dropped out, and they, they knew that, so they were down to two, so that was very public information. We didn't advertise it per se, but they knew about it.
In this process, in an open bid process, they don't know until that starts?
Yeah.
Is there a qualification for being one of the contractors to bid public projects, or can anybody bid a public project?
Anyone can bid as long as they've got the bonding capacity. A, a project of this size, you have to be able to get the bonding to support you, so you, you can't just be the guy in the pickup truck showing up.
Well, they need all licenses and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
Do they have to be qualified? One of the qualifications could be recent project, similar size, et cetera. Those kinds of conditions can be put in, but still open to anybody that meets those conditions.
And that's the logic for prescreening, one of the logic for prescreening.
Excuse me, but following on. And if we go on, like, three B, into the market at large, we can, in our, we can stipulate that you have to prove that you are qualified enough to do a project of this size.
That's right.
Right?
Yeah, a lot of the front-end specifications for the qualifications of the bidders stipulate those things, and Bill and I have worked through those details, insurance requirements.
Oh, Mike, do you want to ask any questions of Paul?
Actually, good to, I hope you can all hear me clear. So, just my observation is that clearly something in the process is broken, or was broken in this last go through, and I did hear Paul's reasoning on that. What I'm concerned about is we had received disturbances and everything was, you know, moving in one direction, and trade-out, we were just dramatically off on the price. And my question is, how can we move forward in a way that we have some, if we're trying to make sense, but you can't simply do that from here?
You went, would you like to...
He was asking, how can we move forward with any confidence that this won't happen again, basically, Mike?
Yeah.
Essentially, yes.
And I alluded that to earlier. I think, once we start scoping out the things that are going to cut the cost on the project to bring it into a new budget, we're going to need to dig in deeper on each of those trades to make sure that whatever's happening in the bidding climate, that we've got proper coverage and that we're working with all of the trades, not just in the estimating world, to make sure that it's realistic. And I think our hope would be that that effort would be, first, look at the high-target items. And as I mentioned, some of the overhead numbers will help bring our initial cost down from the $56 million that Overaw had bid to where we think a public market bid would be. And then look at the high-value items, like the mechanical systems, the plumbing systems, and start narrowing in on what is it we need to do to get that into a reasonable proportion for a project of this size. And the opportunistic pricing that we referred to earlier, on the electrical bids here, you'd think that the same drawings, they'd all come up with the same answers because it's all one set of drawings. But in one bid, there was a $5 million electrical number, and in another, there were $13 million. Big difference in those. So when you're estimating, it's hard to quantify that. But in talking with the bidders, potential bidders, early on, we can get some verification of, is there something about the supply of materials or labor that would influence that? And can we do something simpler? And what's their opinion about how to redesign this, this more palatable?
Bill?
In looking over the few examples that you've given us, which are, on all of them, seems that there was some degree of missing. So can you just kind of elaborate on what your lessons learned on those other ones, where, you know, in some cases, it's up to $100 a square foot, depending on the size of the facility, it's, you know, it can be a lot of money. What did you learn from these other ones? And how, plus with this one, how are you going to incorporate that moving forward?
Sure. So, for instance, the Cherryland Community Center, the client in that case had felt that a CM at risk, construction manager at risk, was the right delivery method. And they pre-qualified a number of contractors to do that. They selected one. And as they were finishing the design with the architectural team, their number never changed, and it was nowhere near the budget. And after months of discussing it with that CM at risk team, the client said, we can't move forward because we're not getting to our budget. They abandoned that approach, and with the help of MAC5, went back in and value-engineered the entire project. It was a very green project. They had a lot of net-zero, green-building amenities to it that ended up getting pulled out of the project. They put that project back out on the street and came in on budget. So that process worked.
And it was also 2017?
That was from late 2016.
Well, Cherryland.
Seventeen, you're right, I'm sorry, seventeen.
May 2017.
Yes.
So a little bit of different market.
A little. But what it's trying to illustrate is that there was a price that was well beyond what the budget was, and we had to change gears to find a way to solve the problem and bring it back in on budget. And we were successful at doing that. Did I answer the question all right?
On Cherryland, anything else on the more recent ones? Brisbane Library?
The Brisbane Library, not a project that MAC5 was involved with specifically, but it was a lead silver project. And the town, in that case, was very limited on their oversight, and their estimate was lean. And it was from a schematic design, not a construction document, set of estimates.
So these aren't all your projects?
No, they're not.
Do you have any other examples of ones that you have recently done? And what's the, what was the degree of error?
Manoel's also with MAC5.
Manoel with MAC5, and I'm one of the principals. So I think what we're trying to show with this slide is that, you know, not that just the projects within your categories, you know, bid at a reasonable price. We're also trying to show that, you know, where the estimate was, where the bid numbers came in, was within around 10%. And, you know, on this one, when we had finished the estimate, we had recommended a 10% bid contingency based on that experience, which obviously was, clearly was not enough in this case, because, you know, bids came in way higher. So what we are trying to actually show is that the recommendation of carrying a 10%, you know, on bid contingency on the estimate, was based on the experience that we had, you know, starting last year, all the way into this year, that all the bids we were seeing were coming 10% higher than the estimates. So that was one of the, you know, trends that we saw. And we tried to incorporate that actually into the budgeting in this process at the end of the CD phase. But again, it clearly didn't, you know, pan out for this project, you know, it was way higher. And as Paul pointed out, you know, in our 17 years, we've never seen a bid come in this high. We've done, you know, 17 years of estimating, never had a project come in at 40% high.
Question, I'm just going to ask a question related to, Paul, you had mentioned under bidder some familiarity. And I'm looking at the cost estimates for the administration PD component, price per square foot.
On our examples?
Yeah, no, and the staff report, and you know the bids and what yours were based on, and then the price per square foot, I mean, the two bidders. There's considerable difference in not all, I mean, the administration and police department is a pretty basic building, doesn't have a whole lot of. No, other than its requirements to be different.
It's one and a half times more, you know, structural and everything.
I get it.
And it's the bigger portion.
I get it, that's a specialty, knowing that the bid's going to be greater because it's the police department. But I'm just looking at the cost, your cost estimate, a price per square foot, and then the two bidders' cost per square foot. And there's a pretty substantial difference between the cost per square foots.
And it's, it's hard to take those segregations of what the bid was for the library and for the civic center. Two days later, Overaw came back and said, yeah, we put those numbers in on bid day, but that's really not the numbers that it's going to cost to get those done. And they gave us another set of numbers, and he said, it's too late for you to do that. So the...
But the bottom line was still the same.
The bottom line was the same, right.
All right, Ricky. As far as, you know, obviously, you know, the costs are just way out of wagon, unfortunately. It seems like we're making history. Is there, I mean, we obviously don't have this pulse. And is there any way that as we move forward, that we can feel more comfortable, something that can be done to make this pulse, you know, here, a local peer contractor with oversight that does?
Yeah, that's a good idea. I mean, I think that we've done that in a number of different scenarios in the past where there's a peer reviewer. And so, to make sure that everyone's on the same wavelength, they go grab numbers and say, that's the right square footage, that's the right rate for it. And we've been involved in projects where negotiated contracts, where it's not a public bid like this, where you have to be silent until the bids are open, where the contractor comes in early and gives us advice on how we're putting the design together, and their estimators look at the numbers, and then we reconcile.
Okay. In a simplifying process, is it better to have stripped buildings and add into it? Or, I mean, as far as design specs that go out, and I guess this is for WRNS as well, as far as estimation, if something's stripped and it's a basic building and you've got all these additional things, is it easier to bid that project as a blank building and then with a draw of ads, if you were a contractor?
Yeah, that would be the suggestion that what we'd like to do is go after the materials of the building first, and only get into the square footage or program as a last resort. I mean, right now, we're looking at a potential $16 million delta that we're trying to whittle down. And we'd like to approach that by looking at the materials and the finishes first, and only go in and start cutting some of the space out. I mean, one of our bid alternates on bid day was to delete the council chamber. And the numbers were like 1.2, 1.4 million dollars for that. We could do that. We could also say, we're not going to renovate this building on day one, and just take that off the table, too. But I'd rather not go into redefining all of the programming effort that the design team went through to define what the city council and the city staff and the police department needed to operate. Only do that as a last resort.
Please, John. I just, one comment, you mentioned the square footage differential and the fact that Overaw came in afterwards and redistributed the bid number, kept the same bottom line. I thought it was important to note that they dropped that $38 million for admin PD all the way down to that $1,300 per square foot, all the way down to $25 million and $867 a square foot, is what their revised scope provided.
Yeah, and their library went from 10 million to 19.
To 19, correct.
And I think as a sort of a roadmap for VE, those are probably reasonable proportions. So once we set a budget that we want to cap at, take those ratios that we saw from Overaw and apply them. So we focus this much of our budget on the city hall and this much on the library.
Any members of council have any questions? And Mike, any further? I'm looking at you. Any other questions for Paul Beamer? Or staff? Do you have mute button on, I hope?
There we go.
Perfect.
No, I have not constant the answer we've gotten so far that we're going to proceed. So I don't know how to ask him his next question, so I guess we'll come up with a conversation.
Okay. Bill?
Yeah, for Murray. So you said you looked at 3A, and you did some analysis. Can you share a little bit more about the analysis of how you estimated that not having it separately, I understand there's, you're going to have to have the site work done, no matter who does it. So whichever award you have, the site work has to be included in that.
Right, 3A is going to just take longer time to package and then separate. And I think that's what, and then it's going to be more design, redesign stuff. So, you know, when we talked to the project management committee and other staff and design team, they felt that's not an option that we would recommend moving forward. It's the most streamlined option to get the project going again and out to bid.
Did MAC5 agree with that?
They agree with 3B.
We agreed with Murray's conclusion.
They all agree with 3B.
Yeah, and the PMC, we all discussed these at length, as to the pros and cons of them.
As I mentioned, we had two robust meetings with the PMC and all the design team, you know, the day after the bids, to review the bids. And it was supposed to be designed, to review the bid alternates that we recommended counsel. Of course, the bids came in so high that that was a moot point at that point. So we talked about that meeting, what are the options moving forward for us to look at? And then we met the following week, again with the PMC. And after we met, talked about it quite a bit, the recommendation everybody landed on 3B.
So we see unanimous 3B?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
A little question about timeframe-wise. I know that there's a WRNS timeframe, if something got back to them in a target date of November, December.
The goal would be to give a scope of work from WRNS back to the council by July 18th for moving forward. But we've already set up weekly meetings with the, or we'll be setting up tomorrow, weekly meetings with the PMC project team every week to begin working on this reductions of scope and change workers and such, even before WRNS gets the authorized scope of work moving, with the goal of getting a bidable project back to the council so it can go out in December.
Clarification on that? Part of the challenge with our bidding environment, we originally assumed we'd go out in January or February of this year, and it didn't go out until April and May. That's right when all of the school projects start getting bid, and they're just up to their eyeballs in work. If we can put a project on the street in January, it's going to be a lot more competitive.
Yeah. How do you feel about timelines, right?
I think it's reasonable. I think that there are parts of this that can be very easy for the design team to solve and others that are going to be very complicated. But once we map out what those options are and what our budget goal is, then we can start to say, this piece is going to take this long, and this piece is going to take that long. And then we can map out, how do we get to the finish line by like Thanksgiving sometime, so that we have time to get it approved and on the street by the first of the year?
One additional comment, members of council, is that another part of this fast-track timeline is to get the full council engaged in making and deciding on certain components of this project as it moves to bid documents. So as the PMC is working on this, there'll be regular working session check-ins with the full council, since we're not going to be going through the full CCAC, becoming the full council instead as a working session to work through, making decisions, yes, do this, yes, change the roof, yes, reduce this project's scope, et cetera. So we can incorporate that into it as we go along, rather than waiting 30 days and each meeting to get that approval.
Any other questions from council? Rick, please.
Yeah, so you've talked about the timing advantage of joining in January versus when we went in May. Obviously, from your assessment and what happened with the bidders, that the market in general is hot and had a big impact, and we lost three of the potential bidders.
That's right.
What about the idea of just holding off for two years or some more significant period of time? I know when we talked about this two years ago, there was a cost element to the project being delayed because...
Escalation.
The inflation of materials and so on and so forth.
The forecasts that we're seeing are not predicting any significant downturn in the next couple of years. Put it off for maybe five or six years, and there might be some change. But there's still going to be escalation costs over that whole period of time that are just chewing away at your, the value of your dollar.
Thank you, Paul. Any other questions for staff, Paul? I'm seeing none, thanks, Paul. Any members of public, any public comment?
There were no comment sheets back there.
No, this is, this is the new...
The new way.
This is our budget.
I am Walter Sleeth, and I reside on Catalpa Drive. I am also a director of the Friends of the Library. I truly feel sorry for you five council persons. These bids and the position it puts the council in and the need for moving ahead is very depressing. I surely don't have the ultimate answer. However, I am one of the directors on the Friends of the Library Board and must speak up for the library. The library, over the past five years, has been given short shrift by this council with a lack of support for proceeding with a separate library site at Holbrook Palmer Park and onto the bidding process, where it appears the library was unwisely connected with the construction of the administrative police building. Even though some of you may feel, because of the concomitant tearing up of the streets around the project, it is not viable to separate the library from the rest of the construction, I strongly argue that this is short-sighted. For five extra years, we have all lived with an inadequate library. We know it is structurally unsafe and doesn't meet modern library standards. Forcing the library into a subsidiary position has compromised the interest of the library. On behalf of the library's users and the Friends of the Library Committee, please go that extra mile and direct that the construction of the library be separated from the much more expensive part of the project, the administrative police structures, and move ahead with the new library plans. I would encourage you to direct the staff to separately negotiate with OverAA to get the library project moving before the end of 2018. Their bid was less than what was anticipated to build the library. Their bid was less than what was anticipated to build the library structures. Thank you for your attention.
Any other members of public, public comment? Seeing none, I'm going to close public comment. We go back to council. And I'm gonna start with Mike. Mike, are you here?
I'm here.
If you, if you'd like, I can start with you.
Sure, sure. So, a couple sessions. One, I'm glad we're exploring all the options. I think it's wise. I hear Wally's comment, I have some sympathy for it. But I do understand why we're circling out on option, option three B. My primary concern is that we cannot take the chance of this happening again. And that therefore, we have to have a target that we feel confident in. Are you even sure to come back with a plan here? And I think that, in my mind, we started to increase the priority. We should, we should make some hard decisions on this project now and recognize that there's a lot of nice to have, so we are gonna have to just skip at this point. And I also think that the council should step forward as much as possible, give direction about the actual size of the project. I heard Paul say that that's not the way he prefers to go. They prefer to start with sort of fit potential and go size only as a last resort. But I believe the priority ought to be to be certain that we can get this project built. And that we should make sure that we are able to get something else that will serve the purpose it needs to serve. And to get there, I think now's, now's the time to offer that kind of direction. Now, when we talked about something like, like, take some study, but eliminating as much as possible the nice to have, because I know some of them are really nice to have, including a lot of the very nice part mill, a lot of this agreement. I think we've talked a lot about having zero net energy library, and still think that's going to be part. And I'd like you to direction that we're not moving, shouldn't move towards that. And we should, in fact, let's reduce the total square footage here by a pure element amount, something in the order of, you know, greater than ten percent of the buildings. So, that's, that's where I am now. I prefer to resource your time. It's like, too, it's like your other comments.
Perfect, Mike. Thank you. Rick?
Well, I think that clearly the market is a challenge and has presented the problem here. But I guess I think there are two problems. And I just wanna set, comment on the suggestion to move forward with the library, because I would support moving forward with the library. But the bid got changed from what first came in. It came in under the amount in the first iteration, as I understand it. But then they revised it, and from a ten million dollar cost, it ended up a seventeen million dollar, nineteen...
Nineteen.
Nineteen million dollar cost, so it's way over. Based on these bids, the library couldn't be built because there's not enough money to do it. So, we're focused on the problem of the construction environment and the bid difference, which is just unbelievable. I mean, it came in, one of the bids came in seventy percent over the estimate. And if you look at the other, where other libraries and the San Rafael Public Safety, how can San Rafael's public safety facility be five hundred and ten dollars a square foot for, for the actual bid? It, it makes no sense. So, the issue that we're not talking about is the funds. We're assuming that the only funds that there are are the funds that are in the general fund plus the small amount of money that was raised by Atherton Now. When we had started this project, Atherton Now was charged with raising twenty-five million dollars, and they raised about five. If we had raised the full amount of money, then we wouldn't, I mean, we still may wanna redo the project because the library came in way over the estimate. But we wouldn't have the problem we have now. I think taking ten percent of square footage out of this and changing the library from zero net energy to, you know, a lean-up is not gonna solve the problem. I mean, I, I think we have to talk about the fundraising also.
Mr. Mayor, can I save you some time?
Please.
With all due respect, the way the, the project was bid, it was both elements together. It's illegal to split those now and say, well, let's just take the library one. So, you would have to reject all bids and go out. One of the options was to go back out and make it so you could separate them. You could go back out and do that, but you cannot now accept any of the bids unless you accept them all.
Second, go forward. Continue, Rick. Rick, continue if you are. I don't know. I don't have a solution. Oh, I thought it was gonna be a solution. I don't have a solution. Elizabeth or Bill?
Elizabeth would like to go first.
Oh, that'd be your gate. Oh!
So, go wait a minute. No, I didn't.
No.
No, no, no. We had a little, so, our attorney hit the nail on the head. We can, we can sit here all night and commiserate and wall around in our misery about the way the bids came in and try to say, this is really good. What we have in front of us right now, we have, you know, these choices that we have to make. We have to reject the bids just right out the gate because they're unacceptable, the way they are. We can't say, oh, well, if we can take the lowest bid and then do this and this. I don't want any potential legal liability in any way, shape, or form to do that. Because I think in that process, it's very clear, you take the lowest bid, you sign a contract, and you go forward. I'm always hating when we get low asphalt paving bids from an asphalt paving company that I know is not as qualified as the other. So, that is what we have to do. So, we have to, I don't wanna reject the bids and rebid the project as is because I think there's a lot of value engineering that can be done. I think the, the design components that were stipulated by the architect are highly complicated. They're probably fine and state of the art. They're probably too complicated for our need and really for our budget. So, I, number two, to reject the bids and rebid the project as is to the open market, it, we would just be spinning our wheels. Number three, reject the bids, redesign to include more value engineering options, and either repackage, it says repackage the current project, but I would say repackage the value engineered project into optional phases. And we talked about that at length. I believe that you have to put it out and say, hey, option one would be the library, and so could we award that? And then we take option two being the civic center, and we get the library going. I think that is messy and is potentially more expensive. And it was talked that it was potentially more expensive to, to separate it out that way because of duplication of site information. Because we are literally creating a whole new community here with underground utilities and what is option three B to reject the bids and redesign to include more value engineering options, reducing the project's scope, and then rebid to the open market with the qualifications, with the stipulations in the bid packet that the contractors who actually bid have to have the qualifications of experience and bonding and all that, that we can legally do, to the extent that we can legally restrict, you know, people who aren't qualified for bidding. And the design build option, a long time ago, when we were talking in the beginning, we talked about a design build option. And it is, in a perfect world, you can do it. But at this stage of the game, I think it would be a lot more timely, time, and it would cost more overall. So, I don't want to point fingers. I don't wanna point blame because you don't get anywhere doing that. We are where we are. We've always said that the bids come in, we have to go back to the drawing board. We will do the right thing, all of us council members. We will do the right thing and get the project done on time and under budget. Not on time, because we don't have a timeline yet, but we will within our means. And the budget that we've been talking about over these last, you know, months and year is within our means because we've scheduled out how it can be paid for. The library is way over the top. And no matter how much money we have in donor funds this year, next year, or the following year during construction, it would not pay for the twenty million dollar price tag. So, we really do have to look at simplifying the systems of the library and the finishes, the teak windows. We can, we can do this. We really can. Maybe take out the millwork, you know, all the built-in. I'm not gonna redesign here, but there's a ton. I just want us to be, to move forward and to do it smartly, and we said that we would do this. So, my vote is three B and put, find somebody that won't do less and blame because that's not gonna go anywhere. We have to move forward and do productive things.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Bill?
Sure. First off, based on where we are today and the fact that the way the bid package was put out, I agree with what it said, that we have no choice but to rebid the project and cancel all the bids that came in and just reject it. And we can't pick and choose with the way it's been structured, which is kind of unfortunate. So, we need to go out, we need to open up the market. I would like to have seen some specific numbers on the phasing, but it doesn't make sense what, what market is saying. So, I can support either A, three A, or three B. So, next is, is, as I was going over the value engineering comments that came through, as I looked at the bid, looked at the numbers, you know, you notice, you look at the library and you look at also the admin PD numbers, the price per square foot. And the price per square foot, even with the revised number of eight sixty-seven, it's, it's half of what the library costs are. And the, the price per square foot for the, for the PD has the one and a half times charge for making sure that it's an emergency-supported building, which has a lot of extra structural things in there. So, that would be higher than, than a normal building would be. So, so as I was looking at that, I wondered, well, what was different substantially in the library? We went back over the bids, and of course, a lot of it was the, was the net zero activity. And I think that that should be reconsidered. Plus, you know, we do have a lot of custom things that, if you were designing a home, yeah, you put those things in there, nice to have, as, as I think has been mentioned by, by Mike earlier. But, but we're, we're designing a, a public facility, and we need to bring a little bit of attention to detail with regards to public cost. Now, George asked, you know, for some comments on, you know, if, if we were to restructure things, you know, what would we have? He wasn't really looking for the reductions in square footage. And so, I think that there are several ideas, and I know that George is working on something as well. But, you know, I think that the library should easily, looking at the, the numbers that per, per, per square foot numbers, it should easily come down at least six million, if not, if not maybe even seven. And the civic center should be down somewhere between eight and nine, I, I believe, to, to, to restructure how, what, what we can do and what we can afford. So, lastly, my last comment is this, is that, in my experience in also designing buildings and getting them constructed, as well as working on programs and things like that, the bid team puts something together, but they work it day in and day out, all the time. And so, they actually own it, and it's very difficult for them to take an objective view. And I, and I think that we don't wanna lose any of the knowledge that's on the PMC. But at the same time, maybe it might be worthwhile to change out a person or two so that we get a fresh pair of eyes. And I think that that should be considered so that perhaps some hard decisions could possibly be made. I agree that we need to make some hard decisions. We've babbered around a lot of the net zero stuff in lots of meetings. And I think, you know, we need to now stop including it as an alternate. We need to make some hard decisions before we go rebid this. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. We don't like the fact, sure, not any of us like the fact that we've stayed it seventeen years and this is an anomaly and this has never happened. Unfortunately, it is. It's here today. And, you know, part of evaluating projects is, you know, following cost estimates. But that's not the sole problem, and you've identified some things that, in fact, I think are reasonable. But we're not alone. I will say that I was at the fire district meeting yesterday evening. And in the fire district meeting, they are probably one of the biggest builders today because they're probably building a fire station once a year, once every other year at this point. And they're reconsidering numbers for station number one. And some of the numbers that they came up with in two thousand and thirteen, they were paying four hundred and eighty-five dollars a square foot. Two thousand and sixteen, seven hundred and eighty dollars a square foot. Station forty-one on the coast side was just built in two thousand and eighteen and bid out nine hundred and seventeen dollars a square foot. And they are predicting the numbers for station one in a two-year, two-year before-year timeframe, no less than twelve fifty square. And that's the conditions that we have here in the Bay Area and here in Atherton. And just remember, it's the construction industry. It's unfortunate, but that's where we are. And as my colleagues have mentioned, Councilman Lewis, very clearly, we've gotta go from where we are to where we're going. And I think that all of us have concern, both based on what we have, how we work together, Paul, and be able to rely on the information that you provide. And I think that, when I mentioned it, in having a peer review oversight component, somewhere another penciled factor of market conditions that come into play. But I wouldn't wanna hinder progress. So, you know, it'd be about finding the right person to work with, trying to feel more comfortable about what the numbers are. I'm very pleased, and I think we all are very pleased, that even the bidders that came into play had some ideas on how to do some reduction in costs. Because this project, the sole intent of it was to build a project within our means. We now know that that project that we have is not within our means based on present market conditions. That's unfortunate. But now it's time to move forward and come up with a game plan. I think that the city manager has outlined a schedule consistent with, I have a number three B. But it also means that everybody that's in this game is also gonna be in the game. And we all have to participate and meet the goals because we don't wanna be in the same situation for next year with a different project and then we're right where we are and get bids that just are not acceptable to one or two people. I think opening it up to a pool of a larger group of people would be helpful. But I was pleased to hear that even the people that bid this project were willing to talk to us and work forward. So, hopefully, the two people with a significant reduction in overall costs comes to the table to rebid the project as its redesign and revalue engineer. I do think that there are some things that would make it better for the city manager as well as the construction group, the civic center. the, the civic center oversight group that's been working hard. It's a group of professionals. We couldn't afford to pay them if we were paying them. These are all community volunteers, all professionals in this industry that are equally shocked at the bids as we are. Um, but again, they're not alone. The residential industry has the same problems as the commercial industry. So, when, you know, I have several residents calling me saying, well, jeez, good thing you're not bidding a roof. You want to hear what I just got to do? And it's scary, but it's the same shock as residents. We are shocked because the construction industry as a whole is so busy, and it doesn't help that we've had some unfortunate events that occurred both north and south of us that are drawing some of the contractor pools north and south. So, again, conditions. So, I think that, um, Councilmember Whitmer mentioned a few things that I think are reasonable kind of benchmarks. I think everybody would be consistent with it. There has to be some significant, um, value engineering into the project. Um, I think that if we establish benchmarks of some cost frames, because now we have a better outline, we're working harder with, uh, Mac Five, and hopefully someone else to help us where our cost factors can. I understand that contractors themselves, you know, provide us information of current, this is what these costs are. Um, our production and overall library costs are roughly six million. Administration PD roughly eight million. Um, if the project management committee has some type of benchmark to work at, not necessarily saying that that is a square footage benchmark, but it's an overall benchmark in each one of those areas to come up with a project that can get within our means, I think is a reasonable approach. We took some constraint, remove some of those abilities for the project management committee, but we are really in a time war zone at this particular point. Um, giving them more tools to work aggressively and do good engineering and, um, value engineering and considerations related to square footage, um, it'll make it easier for us in thirty days when we see this, in sixty days when we see this, and when we get to a point where you guys can make, um, the design changes, as well as we can have a better cost estimate. I think that that would be the proper route. Give you guys more, give them more tools to work with and give us less to look at with a more concise project will help everybody get the outcome. Um, so, that is kind of my general consensus, I think, in summary of what.
Well, you can wrap up. I just want to add on to what you were saying.
Please.
Mayor, I really like your approach in that, um, we come up with a, a dollar amount of what we need to cut and in, I guess, um, bring the library down into, uh, uh, reachability and affordability in the city center. The, the difference, you know, our budget has always been, what Mac Five had kind of estimated, that we had been approving, you know, every month about that forty million dollar range and looking at that. And so, the, if you look at it, it's like sixteen million dollars that we need to cut, but maybe that's unreasonable, and the numbers I heard you say, uh, added to about fourteen million. So, I mean, we're, we may, we, can we afford a, a little increase, you know, just on market conditions, but not the sixteen million?
Mr. Mayor, that six million dollar number, the eight million dollar number that I came up with and shared with the council, is actually based on O V R A's revised estimate per square foot per building, and taking those building costs based on the square footage down to our original budget.
Our forty.
Of forty. So, twenty-five million, the original budget that the council established for admin PD, take eight million dollars off that estimated cost, that's the budget that includes site improvements. Same thing for the library, that brings it down to around sixteen million dollar number of projected within our budget for the library cost. So, cutting those costs out of those projects will bring them back in line with our budget.
Yeah. And if you can do it without cutting programming, uh, that I think would be the optimal.
Absolutely, and, and I, and I think that, uh, I mean, those are minimums. If it happens that it's greater than that, great. Um, I do also want to make a comment, uh, related to Councilman Whitner's comment, uh, related to maybe readjusting, um, the group. I've thought about it, and there really isn't anybody to blame in this product process. Um, I think that the entire council will be very involved, uh, every thirty days related to it, so all of us will have that input. Um, so, I mean, I don't really personally believe, I think that there are two very capable people that have been very acclimated within a group of people that have been working together for five years. Um, you can always throw a hornet into a, a nest, um, but I have, uh, any one of us would have to get up to a similar speed as my two colleagues that have been very active in it. Um, so I don't really see a need to, uh, impact the harmony of a very well-oiled group that unfortunately we are part of these conditions. So, in all, I think that, thank you for that comment, because I have thought hard about that. And it is no blame to anybody here, and no blame in the active residents that we have that have been very involved. We're a victim of climate, uh, construction industry. I'm sure there are a few things that could be done better, um, and we hope and we are going to improve on that. Um, and I do also want to see about the consideration with, um, Mac Five to consider the oversight component as part of our processes we can afford. I believe we can facilitate that through the city manager. My colleagues believe that's a reasonable, you know, ask.
I agree.
To, to help us feel more comfortable. Sorry, Paul, it's really about feeling comfortable at this point.
Right.
As bad as we feel, every once in a while you need a nurse. Um, so, my colleagues, give.
Mr. Mayor?
Please, Mike.
Yes, just, you, you may have heard, this is a good sense of saying, I just want to be clear, I, I don't think I have, I have full agreement with what you just said.
Sure.
Largely, by the way. And I, I, um, don't sound completely agree with everything that was said. For example, this statement about, you know, being ignorant from blaming anyone at this point. Uh, but I do think we need to learn from the experience we just went through. And I, I think, as we went through that experience, we thought we were value engineering. We thought we had built that in. We clearly did not. We were off by, you know, a, a forty percent figure, which is really a rather remarkable figure. I, I think we need to be pretty dramatic, and I think if we take a conservative dollar figure, right, a fourteen million dollar figures to target, we may regret it, because the, the goalposts may move again, and we, we will be stuck six months from now having this in turn. I look forward to be quite aggressive in, in setting a, a real, uh, specific target to be able to hit. That's why I got to things like talking about zero at end and things like talking about square footage. I think it would be a very, very bad thing, we came back and missed again in, in six months. And I'm concerned there's a real chance of that, and I don't know what's different in anything we just talked about, in front of what we just went through. Um, and so, that's, that's my concern.
Uh, thank you, Mike, and I, you know, um, it's a very, it's a very, uh, real concern, because you're right, we, we don't want to do this again. Um, you know, the bench, I was using the Marxists really trying to get it within, but you're right, if the target, if the goalpost moves again, this is World Cup time. Uh, if the goalpost moves in, it's, it's a different game again. We don't want to be in this situation again. Um, so, you. I, I think that, am I, and I'm just, I'm going to ask a question, because it's kind of a little uncertain. We're really going back, back down to a basic component construction, correct? Where we could have the add, so when, uh, Mike had mentioned, some of the green components that are into the impact of the library, if we are stripping the library in essence to, uh, let's say, a silver, well, platinum.
Calgary.
Calgary, and.
Well, that's required.
So, we're getting into, uh.
So, that's all that's a code.
And then having the ability to consider options at a, at a, at a factor beyond what the basic building component would be, that that would be something that this could, this number could be considerably conservative in that sense, but.
We can get there.
It could be something discussed.
Yeah. And again, the council will have opportunities along the way to weigh in and correct the looking sessions versus just getting feedback on what the C C A C or P M C is doing.
So, um, and I want to adhere on Mike's point. Um, the numbers that I gave were really six and eight related to library and administrative component. Um, is that really just a basic, or should we say, uh, you know, our goal is six to ten, and then eight to twelve, what, four and one?
It needs to be higher, because the construction costs go up every, well, you had a number of two hundred or whatever, two hundred thousand dollars a month, or something like that. So, we're, we're now delaying the project.
Six months.
Six to eight months, so that's another million, two million.
You're chasing that curve, right.
So, I think that we need to add an extra couple million to those numbers. And I think that part of the, part of the solution is the, the add-ons and the nice-to-haves, and the other part of it is going to be some square footage. Or, or putting the, some of the square footage in other locations. But I do believe, I mean, you, as I said, I, you know, I looked at.
I, I think we're all saying the same thing. We can sit here all night. We can sit here all night and go run around. I think that the, the bottom line is, we're all saying the same thing, that we have got to get it right this time. And yes, we have been value engineering it all along. We've been talking about that. We have been depending on the architect to, uh, let us know that they were value engineering and designing it and with efficiencies and financial savings. But, and then we were relying on our estimator, which, you know, he said maya culpa. And, you know, but again, we're not going to put blame. We're just going to go back, and I believe that with the in, the information we now have from the contractor's bids, and we see where the really high-ticket numbers are, we can, we can cut quite a lot. I mean, in the P M C meeting the other day with, uh, Pauline and Kylie, they, they were writing down all the things of the, you know, the finishes. And then there's all this, anyway. So, I, I think that we just need to move forward at this hand.
At, at the end of the day, Mr. Mayor, we've got twenty-five million dollars for admin PD, sixteen million dollars for the library.
And there you go.
That's it.
Yeah. I, 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 again, I, I.
Those are the targets.
Those are the targets. I, I am, I agree, uh, but I'd like to give them a little bit of benchmark tool. So, the original numbers I was using was really trying to establish that pitch benchmark. Now, that can change in thirty days, to where, once the C C A C group or the subcommittee group and everybody, staff, and all the consultants that are involved in this project, and we're still off, then those numbers can also be increased in thirty days. Mike, are you okay with that?
I, I, I feel like we're heading down the same process we went to, that got us into the place we are today. And again, I don't blame anybody, but we're, we're going to be aiming at a dollar figures we divided by Mac Five, where we just had the experience, where they were off by forty percents.
Yeah.
And I think that makes it really, really difficult for us to, to move forward. I think there's no option, I agree with you, so we've got to move forward. Uh, and I'm struggling, I don't have a specific proposal about the best way to do it, except to say that I think we need to, uh, make very clear that the nice-to-haves aren't going to happen, and that we're, we're going to build, you know, this, to Calgary standards, to what the requires. And, um, I need to be ready to provide direction to the council in, in very clear form. And I guess we see you in thirty days. That's all I can discuss. I can't think of a better proposal, I apologize.
Okay. Uh, and Bill wants to make a final comment, so.
Yeah. Um, I'm in agreement with Mike, and I think that, you know, continuing to have additional, uh, things continually redesigned in, there's costs associated with those designs. I mean, we, we've all lamented the, the spiraling cost of the design to where we got to today, because, you know, just where we are, it's, it's the time, it's the architects coming down, meeting with us, redesigning the, the facility, redesigning the construction plan. So, I think that, as Mike has said, we need to make some hard decisions. We need to make them very, very quickly, so that they know where they're going. And, and then from there, we can evaluate some other minor things. So, I, I'm in full agreement with Mike, um, and I think that we've been skirting and dancing around some issues on this, and we've, since last December.
I, I, I agree with both of you. You guys are on the same page, and it's very similar to what I said. I just would like to see, I mean, and I think we're all there. We know that some, some reductions are going to occur in both these, um, project zones. I just would like to give them a benchmark to start working at, so that we can do, you know, instead of going blind, uh, and end up where we are in thirty days, I'd like to give a target to where something that they can work at.
So, excuse me. Is that part of the, this agenda item? Uh, because the only thing that's on this agenda item is to, uh, choose one of these, um, options and not identify prices.
I think that.
I think the agenda says to take action on the next steps.
Well, it's, it's an action item, but basically, um, first is three B said reduce project scope. I think the mayor's comments were just about reducing the project scope.
Yeah, that's.
Good, good. I just want to make sure that we can do that, because I think that's a, that's a really good thing to do.
Yeah. Uh, that's, that's all I'm trying, I'm just trying to give a better foundation, uh, for the, because it, it, we're not going to meet before the subcommittee meets next week. So, you know, literally, they're going to be on a time constraint, so, and again, you try to give a target figure.
So, so would we, would we feel, uh, okay about saying we reduce the project scope to, uh, what our original estimate was? Twenty-five million for the, um, admin PD and, uh, sixteen million for the, uh, library, which is the budget numbers that we have been working on and with for the last six months, year? And so, that would be the target. And, you know, the nice-to-haves, maybe the nice-to-have is not the highest expense, expense, you know? I mean, it, it, so you have to weigh it. I mean, I think, I understand what you're saying, the nice-to-haves, that you don't want, uh, the over-the-top, um, uh, grand earth kind of a thing, because that was a huge expense. I, and, and, gosh, who would, who would have thought? I didn't. So, anyway, so I would, I would feel comfortable with three B and reduce the project scope in, uh, to our original estimate of twenty-five million for the admin PD and the sixteen million for the library, and then we've been to the open market.
And just to be clear, that includes all the site work associated.
Including all the site work.
So, the total bottom number is forty million.
Right, by sixteen and twenty-five, returning, to get those numbers returned to a source that I don't trust. That's my problem.
I see.
But from a source, it just proves us, they were forty percent off. And so.
Well, that's, yeah.
How do we design something when you don't know whether that sixteen is real and twenty-five is real? It's the, that's what I struggle with.
Uh, I think that, I, I, no, I, Mike, let me see if I can hopefully answer your question a little bit. And it, it's not a perfect science, estimating is never a perfect science. But I think that taking, uh, some of that information from what we received in the bid, so we've got a real-time cost factor of real bids, right? So, that's today. And taking the numbers that we have that are in there and abstracting those numbers and inputting them into how we do reductions, for one. Um, and all, and the second process was the, or the, I know that to get some degree of assurance of comfortable, uh, with Mac Five is that manager kind of oversight component. So, there's another layer beyond, you know, somebody else that's not with them, that's an independent source.
Right.
That we establish another cost factor through. And still, there's still the responsibility of keeping the eye on the present market. So, as that ball moves, they're still going to be sourcing as things are moving. So, I don't know if there's another comfortable way of, of, you know, assurance, because, I mean, you don't have to list that Mac Five gives us, but there's, you know, there's a few things that we can't change. We can't change the location, we can't, uh, we can't predict market uncertainty. Um, phasing could be an option, but I think that the city managers come up with some ideas how we can try to save costs in moving things around to see if we can get the, the certain things ready that contract, which will be all in the mix of how to reduce the cost of the overall site. So, so I just don't know if there's another, there's no magic ball that tells us the future.
Yeah, I agree. So, I guess what I would ask is, when it comes to action council, we ought to, uh, consider , um, specific elements as early as we can and make decisions as quickly as we can. And, 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 um, realize the goalposts are continuing to move, as Bill said, and so, you know? Okay.
So, so my last, my last comment, the understanding that the goalposts are going to move, and we're, we're basing it based on what Mac Five has said, and then also looking at just two bids. And, and we're, we're focused on the low bid. You know, personally, if I was redoing it myself, I would, my target would be fifteen to eighteen million, understanding we're going to be six to eight months out, and understanding that the markets are going to continue to rise as far as construction costs and labor costs in this area. And, and I think we're foolish if we just hit the original target that we were planning on a year ago.
I, I don't, I don't, I don't understand why, because if we hit the original target, then. Because if we hit the original target, then we're even better off.
When the bids come in, they're going to be 10 percent higher. From what we have, and if you look at every one of the bids that they, they even presented here, there was a delta to what the bid actuals were to what they were.
I'm, I'm just going to step in a little bit. And I, I hear and understand the comment and the goalposts moving, but there may be another variable factor. These may not be the only two bidders in the next scenario. And maybe as a reduction in the overall certification component that we just need what California requires, maybe the pool of people would increase in the actual bidding. So, there's variables that we don't know that could actually make it, like, under budget, but not, not, I, I don't say that, it's like, so, but just, you know, that, that's kind of, we don't know those factors either, so, thanks. So, can I get a motion on the table so that we can move this item through? First of all, I believe that we'll need a motion to reject all bids.
I move that we reject all bids.
And any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Did I hear you? Did I hear you? Is there anything?
I, I, I agree to reject all bids.
Okay, so that would be a 5-0 on the reject-all bids. Can I get a motion for item 3 slash B?
Well, to reduce the project scope.
Yes, that's how it should be.
I make a motion that we reduce the project scope to, and that is an open question, but I believe that if we reduce the project scope to 25 million for the admin PD and 16 million for the library, which is what we have always budgeted for, with a contingency of up to 10 percent. Because in all of our bids that we go out, there's always a 10 percent contingency. So, we agree to that up to 10 percent contingency, and then we bid to the open market.
Okay, so in essence, we've done 3, and we're moving into B, the 3 threat.
Yes.
Can I get a second for Elizabeth's motion? Mike, hold on a second.
He's got a poor connection.
You're looking for a second?
A second on Elizabeth's motion, did you hear her motion, or would you like to repeat it?
I did, no, I did. My, my, my only question on that is, is does that address the role of the council in accessing those orders? We see this every month.
Oh, so I think that would be the next, that would be a follow-on motion.
Okay, well, that, I, I, yes, exactly.
Okay, any further discussion? Rick, any kind of comments or any further discussion? So, I made a call motion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, Mike, sorry for the delay. Rick? Was that a night? I'm sorry.
Is this dealing with the issue of rebidding to the open market?
Yes.
3B.
3B.
Yeah, I'm going to abstain.
Okay, reason for extension?
I don't understand, if we don't want to have a failure again, I'm not sure why we wouldn't have the optional phases where we could build one of these facilities rather than not be able to build any.
So, if you stand, can you-
You technically don't have to make that decision tonight.
Okay.
You get on, on the 18th, when we come back with a scope of work with WRNS, if you have a chance to think about it, there's that, if you want to provide staff direction.
Yeah, I'd like to see the numbers on 3A versus 3B, some more specifics. I, in principle, it sounds logical, and I understand there's the issue with regards to the site work and how you're going to wrap that in or not wrap that in. However, you know, Wally's correct. We, the town has needed a library for a long time, and potentially, you know, it could be held up again. And so, but I prefer that they both go together, but I'd like to see the numbers, okay? And I think that's reasonable, so we don't have to do it.
How are we going to see those numbers?
Well, you, WRNS has got to come back with a scope of work in order for them to move forward with these design changes. And we could ask that that scope of work provide the basic reduction in scope, effort, et cetera, as well as the reduction of scope to include the phasing of the-
And take them to, to that.
So, Rick, you're going to go ahead and hold the extension, and there's a 4-0 extension. And it will be brought back to us to that other consideration. All right, thank you, everybody, for that.
Yeah, and then there's the other part of, I'd like to make a motion that, going forward for this new reduction in project scope, that the PNC meets with architects and staff and comes back to council on a, what, by a weekly basis?
It could be monthly, it could be by weekly, it could be every month.
As often as needed, but at least, at least, I think at least twice a month. As soon, on a timely basis.
Yes.
Right?
Yeah, right.
That includes office, but there's no meetings?
Yes.
I, I, I'm just going to take a guess. Is there a consensus that everybody wants that? I mean, does it just need staff direction now?
It's staff direction, but we're going to bring it back to council as often as we can whenever there's input needed along the way.
It had those working sessions, like-
So, could a council notice, try to formalize it a little bit more, it sounds like, so?
I, I understand that, but you've got folks that might be on vacation and others that might not be there.
Well, I'm just trying to accommodate council other members.
And I, and I appreciate that, and I would like to have it formalized. And maybe it's not in the August, but every time we're having a meeting, I think we should hear a report on this.
Yeah.
Even if that report is, we didn't do anything.
Yes.
Oh, no, no, there's, there's, thanks to-
Well, yeah, that, that shouldn't be an option.
That's another option.
All right, so I, with the understanding that Elizabeth's motion is, is that, you know, as, as much as we can, but as quick as we can.
As often.
And as often as we can. Staff understands that, but we're going to polarize that with a motion, and can I get a second?
Well, I don't like that, it's what's in this motion, because the councilwoman Lewis was throwing in numbers, and those numbers as part of the resolution? Were in your motion?
They were part of the motion.
They were part of the motion.
I, I, I didn't vote, by the way, you didn't hear me say yes.
Oh, okay, I go ahead.
So, I'm not, I'm not agreeing to those numbers.
Do you know what's going on?
Got you.
So, well, I'll, I'll sit over here and break.
That is staying, and for the reasons that you would like those numbers, or if the numbers-
I think that the numbers, more thought needs to go into those numbers. And I also share with Wally and, and Rick's comment with regards to the library. And I'd like to understand the numbers associated with the phasing, so. So, for those three reasons-
Let me, okay, can I, can I have another discussion about this, his reason? Because my understanding from what staff has said about the phasing is that it will take a much longer time to even get the bid packet out. And so, you may be even delaying the opportunity of building the library on its own, you know, bidding, you know, awarding a bid just to do the library on its own rather than, because, to separate it out. Eileen?
Eileen, it's on foundation information.
Yes, okay, so, right now, we have one bid package, and all the buildings can get built simultaneously. All the utilities and the infrastructure connected to the buildings in order to make it function are currently in one bid package. When we phase, if we phase the buildings and split it out into two bid packages, the infrastructure has to be studied a bit, and there may be some temporary infrastructure that will need to go in in order to make the first building operational. And so, when you go in and have the second building built, there's going to be additional money to adjust the other utilities and the infrastructure to make that work. So, there's, there's costs involved in construction for that.
And designed to get that.
And the other portion is, there's design that will need to be put into that effort to figure out how to do it, okay? Then there's also cost for producing the documents, because you have to split out the projects now into two different bid packages. And there's the administration, excuse me, administrative cost of administering two bid packages and two construction projects.
Okay, so it sounds like there would be some adjustment, obviously, in the overall cost. If we have a better idea of what those costs could be in 30 days, right?
We'll get something from WRNS on the 18th that'll kind of explore that a little-
Yeah, we'll expand upon what Eileen just said.
Yeah, so if we wanted to go into the multiple phase component, based on the information we have, would you make an educated decision in 30 days? Mike, did you get that? On if we wanted to phase, and Rick, and Bill as well, sorry. So, Bill and Rick have left staying, and the, one of the components for Bill was the phasing component and also the cost component.
Yeah, in order to manage it, there is, I don't even-
All right, but either way, as it stands, we're moving forward. Item number would be 3B, and it'll be back to our, in front of us in 30 days with more direction, and staff will already have 10 subcommittee meetings by then. Of course, I'm kidding. Staff, everybody look up, I got some-
So, Mike, is it time to get up? It's quarter to five.
Are we good, Mayor?
Yeah, we're good, thank you very much, Paul, we're going to go ahead and move on to the next.
Time for your morning coffee, buddy.
Figure out where we are. We're going to move on to item number 16. Thank you, everybody, that, thank you very much, Paul, thank you very much. No worries, Mike, thank you very much.
Bye.
Understand.
Cheers, have a cup of tea.
All right, so we're moving on to item number 16. It's to adopt the attached resolutions, 2018-19 operations capital budget salary and its resolution for unrepresented staff, the 2018-19 salary classification schedule and remand appropriations. And that is going to be Robert. Barry. Thither.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I have a PowerPoint, Teresa's going to put it up right now.
Scott is right here.
Right, thank you, Mayor, members of the council and public. Yes, as before you, you have the city, this kind of after 2018-19 budget, budget binders, you each all have one. So, what we're doing here tonight is the council is going to adopt a couple of resolutions and adopt their 18-19 fiscal year budget. The council, just briefly, the council had three, held three study sessions in review of the town operation capital budgets. Tonight is the culmination of these meetings. In fact, in light of that, it will spread the council of having to go through a thorough presentation, and that includes PowerPoints. So, you have my staff report before you. So, brief highlight, in fiscal year 18-19, the town will receive general fund revenues of about 15.7 million, balanced against expenditures of 14 million, 88,000. There's a single-year operational revenue surplus of 1.6 million. This is a projected end, year-end fund balance of 18.5 million at the end of fiscal year 18-19, and this is the inclusion of excess year-raff and transfers out. Other than that, conclusion, we've gone over this, it's just, again, the culmination of the, of the budget and required to adopt the company resolutions. And also, I need to add that there's a section in the staff report at the beginning regarding salary of city manager due to CBI adjustment as directed by city council of the following amount. Detail within the staff report needs to be read into the record. With other, without further ado, if there's any questions?
Thank you, Robert, we've seen this before a few times.
Yes.
Please, questions from council?
I have a question. So, Robert, just as the mayor said, we have seen this budget over the last several months and asked lots of questions. Can you verify that what we have approved during those budget working sessions has not been significantly or materially changed?
Yes, nothing has materially changed since, from our budget sessions. Right.
Any other council members' questions? Thank you very much. We're just trying to keep track of where we are. So, if we have no other questions from council, again, Robert, thank you very much. I'm going to actually open this up for any public comments. Any members of the public have any public comments on this item? Seeing that, I'm going to close, talk comments, and back to council. Any final comments from the council?
Thank you for all your work, Robert, and, and the rest of staff.
Yes.
As always, it was very detailed, and, and you were very patient in listening to our, our questions and our comments and incorporating those. So, again, congratulations, it's got through smoothly, yes, it has. It passed.
Thank you, appreciate it. And again, just want to echo the second sentiments that, you know, it's been a group team effort from George through the rest of the staff, Teresa, everybody, all the department heads, so.
I wish other districts, et cetera, would do as much diligence as we do here.
Thank you.
It's really gotten better and better over time, even your photographs are-
That's where the team effort comes in.
Yeah, yes, yes, yes.
Yeah, Robert, I, I can tell you, and then, and George, thank you. I, I know that we make this full budget available to public, and that you constantly keep making the full budget bring, bringing here.
Wonderful.
Click my notes now. Your presentations have been very good this year, and getting it to 400 pages is nice. All right. Thank you very much. Can I get a motion to adopt all four resolutions, and somebody can read the-
Certainly.
Can I get a second on that, please?
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
And can I get somebody to read again the sentence, city manager's salary, you know?
May I have that, please?
You can.
Oh, Rick's going to read it. No, no, go ahead.
Rick, you, thank you very much.
No, good.
Rick's been quite a lot, so.
Rick and you, I, we didn't mean to read, we were going to be quiet.
We did.
I can say-
Okay, this is a required statement to be read regarding the city manager's compensation. With the adoption of the salary and benefit resolution, after six years of service for the town, the city manager will receive $217,589 per year plus a $400 per month auto allowance, plus a $3,000 per year technology benefit allowance, which would be forfeited if it's not used, a $481 per month contribution to an approved 457 deferred compensation plan, and potential for an annual performance bonus of up to $15,000. The city manager receives retirement, health, and leave benefits consistent with all other management staff. The city manager pays the employee's share of retirement, which is 7% of pay and 1% of the employer's share of retirement costs. Total annual pay excluding benefits of the city manager is $222,389. Total annual cost with benefits, including assumed full receipt of the technology allowance and the current CalPERS employer pension rate, which is 9.635%, is $266,055. This amount does not include the potential non-pensionable annual performance bonus mentioned above, or the approval of two weeks of vacation per year.
Thank you very much, Rick. And through the, can I also make a note that, or can you also make a note that council member Lempers, due to a flight constraint, is no longer on line?
Yes.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Rick, for participating in that. Can I go ahead and move on to item number 17? Oh, did we, okay, we did?
We did.
We did, we had a motion.
Oh, you may be right, we'll just, we'll go with that.
Is there a vote? There was a vote.
There was a vote.
No, no reviews.
Billy voted.
I did, I voted on that one, for sure.
All right.
And then we read, we vote again.
With him we read, see, Billy, you're always trying to touch me on-
You're slowing us down. I'd like to have the meetings go as lead as possible.
Can I ask a question of Robert?
Go on, you're going to read the next resolution.
I am, I'm going to, I'm going to move on to item number 17, please. Is there something else?
I'll, go ahead.
I'm going to go ahead and move to item number 16, three-year contract extension plus a two-year option for agency corporation and provide public works maintenance and for that- provide public work maintenance and managing services, and that's Robert.
All right, thank you, Mayor, members of the council and public. We have before you tonight for your consideration, a three-year contract extension and a two-year optional extension after that for public works maintenance in management services with a not to exceed amount for, of five hundred, almost five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for the upcoming fiscal year, and directing the city attorney to prepare the extension and authorizing the city manager to execute it. Since two thousand eleven, MCE has been providing maintenance services for the town. They've done a great job for us and have been able to work with staff, particularly with on-call needs and flexibility, and we appreciate the service that they've been able to provide. So we're looking for the opportunity to extend the contract. Just some of the changes from previous years. We are looking to expand our staff, or the staff support that we have. Right now, our contract provides for five folks on a full-time basis, we really only have four. MCE is able to provide that additional staff person, and we're looking to have two full-time people acting at the park with three full-time people acting in the street division. With this contract extension, we are having MCE provide some adjustment in wages, and so the wage rates are going up from previous years. In the last three-year contract, there were zero hourly cost adjustments, and so there is a slight bump up, and what we are also looking to do is provide for a CPI adjustment in those hourly rates moving forward on an annual basis, and that will be with a cap of two and a half percent, but based on the local area CPI index. There are some state mandated prevailing wage items that MCE works on, that those typically average around thirteen percent of their activities, and those rates that they are required to pay their employees for those activities are outlined by the State Department of Industrial Relations. Those items are tracked and billed to us for those particular items that are requested. MCE has also agreed to increase its community gift. Annually, they have previously been providing us with a valuation of about a quarter, sorry, a half a percent of their annual contract for that community gift, and with this contract extension, that'll be up to one percent. The activities.
Sorry, it will be up to one percent?
It will be increased to one percent. And so their activities relate to the variety of programs that public works is responsible for, and their costs of the contract are broken up accordingly. So there are allocations of this contract that are attributed to the street, to town facility maintenance, library, building grounds, routine maintenance at the tennis center, managing the park services, and supporting event services. With that, I'm available to answer any questions. We also have representative from MCE here, if you have any questions for them as well. And of course, our public works maintenance manager is here. He's done a great job in managing MCE and having them support the town.
Perfect. Mike, any questions for staff?
Just clarification.
Please, sir.
So I understand the budget for two thousand eighteen nineteen for this, it's approximately five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, and that would cover five FTEs.
That's correct.
Is that right?
That's correct.
Can you, please?
No, go ahead.
I was just gonna ask, can you explain what a community gift is?
Certainly, so on an annual basis, there are certain activities that MCE has been doing for the town that are outside of the scope of normal maintenance services, such as putting up holiday decorations, posting banners and things. And I can have, if you'd like MCE to elaborate on a few of those items, we can do that as well. But in essence, it's a gift to the town for some extras beyond regular maintenance services that are a benefit to the town as a whole.
And that we would be doing without any cost. Bill, please.
So, so Robert, just to make sure that we're clear, the MCE people, others are clear. So we haven't had the right number of people in the park, so we're going to, as of, I guess, beginning of this contract, July one. And at different times, we've talked about having not just a mow and blow capability, but we need, we've invested a lot of money in the landscape there, and we need somebody knowledgeable to do that, and to make sure that they understand what trees need to be trimmed, what trees, what type of water, et cetera, when, et cetera, and so. So it's not just a, you know, just an added head, it's a knowledgeable head that will keep the park looking beautiful and enhance its beauty, as opposed to just cut the grass, which seems to me to be contracted out to somebody else, they don't do that. So another firm comes in and cuts the grass. So, so, you know, and we've been talking about this since, for several years, since we put in the event garden. So we wanna make sure that we're getting, you know, good value of the person that's in the park with maybe some periodic reports to Park and Rec or the Foundation, et cetera, on what they're doing that, other than just, hey, we fixed the sprinkler, we fixed the pipe over going to the fountain, like they just did this weekend, and they did a great job on it, by the way. So, so can you try and make sure that we stay on top of that and that we're getting that value-add knowledgeable person?
That is the intent, and Dean from MCE recently hired the body that he intends to bring forward, and if you want to, if you can be.
Dean, Mr. Mayor of council. The individual that we have hired has public works experience, landscape experience, facility maintenance experience. He's worked both in the public and private sector, and actually comes to us from South City. So he's a motivated individual that's looking forward to his new assignment over here, and while we regret that it's taken so long to find that individual, this labor market has been brutal, and we were extremely pleased to find what we found, and we feel very good about it.
And council member, MCE has heard your concerns, and we will be making sure that we are upping our service.
We gotta up the game on that, on that, because the event garden is long into disrepair.
It was a three hundred thousand dollar investment, private funds.
So my question has to be, and how often, I know the streets and the corners, we've got landscaping and hedges that grow out very rapidly, and when you're at a stop sign to turn, it's hard to see, especially even here at Asheville, but like on to Valparaiso. So are, do we take care of that, or is it the property owner that has to take care of it?
It would all depend on the area.
Yeah, there's a split, and so there are certain areas that we maintain, whether it's our, the trees that the town is responsible for, and let's say the hedges that are here around Civic Center, those are our responsibility. There are private property owner landscaping that they are responsible for maintaining. I think in the upcoming Athertonian, we have a little snippet reminding folks about their landscaping responsibilities, and so that's something that staff would work with code enforcement to make sure that folks are maintaining their furnitures appropriately.
So the other question I have is, who's responsible? These fiber installers have gone through town and they've cut trees and branches and just left them in the right of way, and who's, nobody's picking them up? I mean, there's a whole bunch of them who are looking. I mean, am I supposed to call code enforcement and?
I think if you made that comment in front of the city manager, he'll take care of it, but that's not the agenda.
Well, but, I mean, is that?
That's not, that's not MCE's responsibility.
And, okay, my second question is, you're locking your budget for three-year term, except for the annual COVs.
That's correct.
So I guess, I thought salaries were the biggest part of, what are your extra expenses?
I'm sorry, can you correct that? The COV applies towards those hourly rates, and I believe that.
To keep the people that we have.
That's the most, but that's the biggest part of.
That's, that's correct.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Rick, any comments or questions? Wanna make sure you're equal time.
I don't need equal time. No, I'm fine.
I just have a question for David, since you're here. The transition, you've taken over the Steve's responsibilities on this, and is, as far as, like, Robert, you've got data, data, or the transition and how the allocation of times and everything, is that kind of the footprint that Steve set up? Have you had to make that process any better? Are we having any issues that we would need to iron out before we go into anything? Are you comfortable?
I'm pretty comfortable.
All right, any other questions? Any members of the public, any comments on this item, on the agenda? Seeing none, I'm gonna go close public comments, back to council. Any final comments? Can I get a motion?
I'd like to move, the council will consider and look to approve the three-year contract extension with MCE. That would be given in July one, but it has a potential, like, three-year up option to extend the park and public work maintenance.
Thank you very much.
Basically staff recommendation.
Basically staff recommendation. Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, can I have a vote, please? All voted aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extension? There we're good. All right, let's move on, thank you, Robert, for reading on that one. Let's move to item number eighteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, public. We have an item that, in essence, started with the, through the rail committee, there was some notice of some activity related to PG&E activities near the Caltrain right-of-way. And the, through that, we've had discussions with PG&E, and PG&E was, PG&E and the other utilities were served, and noticed to relocate their lines to accommodate the new cantenary system for the electric lines. And with that, there was a concern that they'd be raising a whole bunch of poles in the right of way to get those lines over. We've since gotten some additional clarification with regards to the activities for those crossings, and so PG&E does not, at this point, intend to raise the lines at Fair Oaks. There is one pole at the intersection of Maple and Dinko Spiel, which is on the train side, the track side of station lane, that they are looking to raise, as well as one pole at Watkin, at the Watkins Crossing on the opposite side of the tracks from where we are sitting now, so on the park side of the tracks. And so there is the potential for creating an underground utility district if we wanted to not have those lines crossing aerially. There is the, the council can consider the creation of an underground utility district. Costs these days are somewhere around fifteen hundred to two thousand dollars a foot, according to PG&E, for the electrical undergrounding. We would be responsible for various costs, including inspection, managing the project, as well as any modifications to our streetlight system. And we have, I think, just over one point three million dollars in our current Rule Twenty A account, which PG&E could use towards that undergrounding process. For projects, we're allowed to borrow forward up to five years' worth of allocation, and we receive about twenty-five thousand dollars a year, which isn't very much, doesn't go very far. Should the council desire, there is another option for those funds other than undergrounding, and that would be the potential to sell those to a jurisdiction that is active in undergrounding, and these days, costs, sorry, compensation for those credits with PG&E has been ranging between forty and fifty cents on the dollar. And so were we to sell the credits we have and the credits that we'd be expecting over the next five years or so, we could potentially get about seven hundred, seven hundred thousand dollars or so. So, before you, for your consideration, is the potential for some outlined underground utility district, as you have exhibits in your package. If this is something the council is considering before moving forward with any sort of formal action, we would recommend that staff be directed to reach out to the property owners in the affected area to ascertain how interested they are in undergrounding of this area, because each property would be responsible for the cost of converting their properties to accept underground service if they currently have overhead service. And so that would include modifying their electric meters and how the overhead utilities currently come into their house. The district would bring up the conduits basically to the front of their house for that conversion. So we can use Rule Twenty A funds for up to a hundred feet from the right of way to get to the building.
Thank you, Robert. Any questions for Robert? So, Greg, please.
If it's one point five million and it's fifteen hundred a foot, and that's a thousand feet?
Something like, yeah. So, I mean, like I said, the money that we have won't go very far.
And how, how many feet do we need?
Well, it would depend on what districts you're, we have a couple of options, and so there are some rules that PG&E has as to how those districts are outlined, and so they have a minimum length of either six hundred feet as a stretch or one block. And so, for example, you could create just that piece, that desire to create a piece that does the Fair Oaks Crossing, which is closest to the Civic Center building that, buildings, as we move forward. We cannot do just the Maple Crossing or just the Watkins Crossing, so to do that, those two crossings, in essence, we would have to do that stretch of Dinko Spiel Station. Which is, we would be right at the edge of our capacity, and if we were to say that costs would increase over the next few years, it would likely be a little more than the funds that we would have.
What happens if you do the Fair Oaks Crossing?
What's that?
That we'd be at our capacity to?
No, if we were to try and do all of it, the Fair Oaks Crossing is just, I think, a couple hundred feet, it's not that full stretch, but looking at the entirety of what we have for the two districts, it's, I think, a little bit over a thousand feet.
Oh, great. No, and then, if it's the Fair Oaks Crossing, are there homeowners that would have to change their service?
For the Fair Oaks Crossing, I don't believe so.
And, and if it's the Maple and Watkins, then it would just be the, the first homeowner, is that right? Because of?
Based on, based on the exhibit that we've laid out, we had one conversation with PG&E about those boundaries, and there are two properties that front Dinko Spiel Station that do have overhead utilities. If. there would be additional homes that would be impacted.
So, Robert, this originally started because PG&E gave notification that they were raising the height of the lines near the track area. And this special district component would not impact, would not stop them or change what their direction, we wouldn't meet the time constraints, correct?
That is correct. They were required to relocate their utilities, I think, by the end of October to accommodate the Caltrain schedule. Undergrounding is a multi-year process. PG&E has several other, you would, we would have to create the district formally and through a public hearing process. And at that point, our project would basically be at the bottom of PG&E's queue, and it would be a few years before they got to this project.
So it does not impact the current.
The other item to be aware is, we are currently reconsidering the civic center. And so at this point, I don't know what that means in terms of the building orientation, and if the changes that we're looking at as we value engineer would, the visual impacts of the civic center may or may not be reduced with the undergrounding. Right now, Fair Oaks is a bit away from our building.
Built in elements.
Yeah, so, from the note and conversations with the city manager, the only, the only thing that we potentially would have to do would be Watkins, but then, then there was some comments that we probably wouldn't even need to do that. Is that not correct?
Yeah, the latest information that I got from PG&E is that they're only looking at these three crossings to adjust two poles. And so one is on Watkins, on the far side of the tracks. I think.
How tall?
What's that?
How tall are these poles that they're talking about?
Let's see here. So the one on Watkins is currently 50 feet high, and it would be raised to 60. The one at Maple and Dinkelspiel is 45, and they'd be raising it to 55 feet. So a 10-foot extension on each.
So that'd be about as tall as the double cantilever?
Yeah.
So, okay. But, but the other, we don't have enough money to do, make a dent, really, and we don't have, and there's no time, and there's no time, really, to get anything done.
It would be a number of years before it were to happen.
And they haven't done a dent? What was the date?
They're gonna have to do their adjustment by the end of October.
So, say what you say on the line. Yeah.
I think we sell it.
Any other, any other questions? Seeing none, I'm gonna, any members of the public, any comment on this item on the agenda, number 18? Seeing none, I'm gonna go ahead and close public comments and bring him back to the all-silked under commentary.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, please.
I believe your council also received an email from Alex K. He's a resident on the Capitol.
Yes.
And he's interested in pursuing undergrounding of the industry. Now, Rule 28 might not apply to the entirety of Maple or Walnut or others. It gives a certain application.
It probably doesn't.
Right.
There's only four criteria, and one of them is a civic area, civic center kind of thing. Everything else is a heavily trafficked roadway.
But there could still be a district formed with 20 feet, 20 feet district or some other residential district. And the town might be a part of that if that district were formed and has some costs involved that wouldn't be, would be paid for our Rule 28 funds. But we could still talk to Alex, ask Alex if he wants to start talking to his neighbors about forming such a district. It would tend to be formed anywhere in town.
Yeah, so, I have a comment on that.
Okay.
If I could just have a comment. Well, since you're, I, I have heard so many people in town saying that we need to underground our utilities. Lindenwood is pretty much undergrounded, okay? But there are utility poles going through people's backyards. They would love to have it undergrounded. And so if we start talking about undergrounding our utilities, we really should do, look at it throughout the rest of the town and try to do something.
I know another resident who would be interested in spearheading such a conversation as well.
Yeah, okay, so.
Any other comments? I will tell you, George and I have talked about special assessment districts for a long time. And, you know, they can be broken up to all different various sizes and pieces together. So if, in fact, we have a resident that has some interest near the tracks, and then how many poles do we know that are in that section between ECR and Dinkelspiel and Fair Oaks and City Line Side?
Well, I think the poles are probably spaced out at about 150 feet apart.
So if, in fact, a special assessment district could be, if there was an interest to try a baby step jurisdiction, that somebody has some interest, I think maybe if, it doesn't cost us anything to poll your neighbors to see if they would be willing to get estimate across.
They're the poles.
Poles again.
Pole?
Your neighbors.
Pole the neighbors about poles, okay.
No harm. It doesn't touch the, it wouldn't be eligible for lease funds, but yet if somebody wanted to be heard of poles in a special assessment district, it would realistically be, I mean, the cost of establishing district or district is on.
Usually there's a survey, a district would be formed, they pay for an engineering report that's created, that tells them what the estimates are. They then shop that around to their neighbors. They vote on it, council approves it, and it moves forward. But again, it's a multi-year process to get into PG&E's queue. But if residents are interested, it's something they can.
If we have a measure that's multi-introgetic, maybe then it would be something you could take on and start something. But you don't need, no actual direction. Perfect. Thank you very much. All right. So the final, where are we? Motion to adjourn. All of you?
Aye.
Anybody opposed, can say? Any final public comments? Greg, you really walked it out now, so. Seeing no public comments, we're closed. We adjourn.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Hey, thank you very much.